Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting, April eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, Goffstown Board of Selectmen.
Are we getting feedback in the?
No.
Okay.
No feedback?
Was it your computer?
No.
Okay. First order of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance. You can all rise. Would you lead us next?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is the acceptance of the corrections of April fourth, two thousand and eleven, non-public minutes, and April eleventh, two thousand and eleven, public and non-public minutes. Do we have a motion?
A motion to accept.
Second. Any discussion? Is that for both?
Sure.
Both dates? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is announcements. And we have a traffic alert on South Mass Road here in Goffstown. It's dated April eleventh, and it's an immediate release. It's, uh, Goffstown Public Works Department announces the start of construction work related to the completion of South Mass Road Drainage Improvements Project. The work will start Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, and is expected to last approximately one month, including possible weekend work. South Mass Road will be open to all residential and business traffic. Delays may be encountered in the work zone. Work is expected seven AM to seven PM. This notice and other updates regarding construction will be posted on the town's website, W W dot Goffstown dot com. Please contact Alex Canon, Public Works Department, at four nine seven three six one seven, extension twenty-seven. And I'll repeat, extension twenty-seven, with any questions. Thank you. Uh, we have another announcement, Sue?
Yes, there are two others in the packet.
Right.
One, do you want me to do one?
Why don't you start with?
Uh, the first one?
Yep.
We had someone who inquired about, um, an old farm called Ben Dyke's Farm and wanted information on it. And Kathy Ball, uh, was able to help Mark Tessier identify what the gentleman was talking about and sent him an email about that. And he was able to pull it up and, and see it. And he was really appreciative because he had fond memories of visiting there when he was a child.
That's very nice. Terrific. Thank you, Sue. Another one is a letter of commendation. It's the firefighter Joshua Ledbetter, and it's from Chief Richard O'Brien. Uh, the purpose is to officially commend firefighter Joshua Ledbetter for his exceptional accomplishment on attaining his paramedic certification through the National Registry of Emergency Medical Technicians and licensure through the State of New Hampshire Bureau of EMS. In the past eighteen months, Josh has completed over twelve hundred hours of a combination of classroom and clinical setting training and education. His clinical experience not only centered around providing advanced life support care in an ambulance, but also in hospital setting in areas such as the emergency room, intensive care unit, operating room, and labor and delivery. His high-level commitment to the paramedic program and the fact he excelled to be one of the top students in his class proves that Goffstown Fire Department and the town of Goffstown can be proud of the work and achievement Josh has attained. I expect the fire department and the patients Josh will encounter through his career will benefit to the highest degree from his latest accomplishment. In closing, I believe firefighter Joshua Ledbetter truly deserves to be congratulated and rewarded for a job well done for helping the fire department progress to a level where we continue to offer high-quality, advanced-level care to our residents and visitors of the town. And that's signed, Chief O'Brien. And that's very nice, and, uh, I congratulate, uh, Josh on his accomplishment. Anything else? Any other? Okay, seeing none. Our next order of a business is public comment. At this point, we take comments from members of the public. Seeing no members of the public. I'll get on to our next item, which is Public Works Director Carl Querum regarding crack sealing, uh, bid specs, and four-season dump spreader bids.
Thank you. You have your, our annual crack sealing, uh, spec in front of you. We did make one change this year. The only problem we've always had with our crack seal is they, they put down more than they need to. They seal perfectly good cracks. And the reason they do that is they're paid by the gallon or the pound, so we're constantly having to chase them and try to stop them from doing that. So this, over the winter, we met with the distributor, the, the manufacturer of the crack fill product to review our, uh, specs and products. And the recommendation they made is that you bid it by the square yard. It's a real, the real cost of crack seal is, is based on, uh, the time it takes them to cover the ground, not as much the material they're putting in. So, we did make that one change to the spec. We're gonna ask for a per-square-yard price. But other than that, it's the same spec and the same bid that we do every year.
Motion to accept the Public Works Director's recommendation.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item, we opened bids last week on our, uh, dump bodies. This is a replacement body for that ten-wheeler. You should have a spreadsheet with the various prices and options in your, uh, packet. I'll just tell the board, uh, we are recommending, we had forty thousand dollars that we had in the budget for this. The, uh, the low bid came in under that. Uh, let me just describe the options for you. Option one, we asked for an option, and we bid it as an option because we weren't sure what the price of steel, uh, would be doing right now. But it's for stainless steel body instead of conventional steel. The last, I think the last three dump trucks we've bought have had stainless steel bodies. Option two is Dickie John spreader controls for the, for the calcium chloride and salt spreaders. Most of our trucks have these Dickie John units now. Our recommendation is, um, that we go ahead with the two options even though it exceeds the budget. Mark has been getting prices for the transmissions. The other, this money, the forty thousand, was in the reconditioning line of the, of our operating budget. And we also had in there a couple of very large transmission overhaul jobs. We think we can make up the eight thousand dollars, um, in those two transmission jobs. One is for the dozer and one's for the, for the grader. The reason we feel we want to go with the stainless steel, um, the performance of the stainless steel has been such that though we haven't gone through a complete lifecycle to prove it yet, we're confident that we're gonna be able, we're hopeful that we're gonna be able to get through two cabin chassis lives with one body. When we use conventional steel every three or four years because of the salt and the wear and tear, we have to paint the bodies and we have to, um, get them reconditioned. We got a quote, you know, usually when we recondition, we do the whole truck, but we called up our paint vendor just to get a quote to refinish a body. And it's, it's a little over four thousand dollars if they were to just recon, just the body of the, of the truck. We estimate over a twelve-year life that we'd have to do it at least twice, probably three times, uh, reconditioning the body. So, if, even with one lifecycle, it, it's kind of a wash to go with stainless steel. But we're really hoping to get more than, uh, one truck life out of a body package. So, that's our recommendation, is that we go with the low-bidder Tenko, but we take the option of the stainless steel and the spreader control.
Just a quick question, Carl, on the, um, my understanding is we're putting this dump body on in lieu of replacing the truck.
Right.
Do you foresee the added life stainless steel versus plain steel that will get out of the dump body to stay with, ensure, what am I trying to say? Will the vehicle last that long? In other words, we were planning on replacing that vehicle now, but we did the body instead. Will we see that life? Are we saying we're gonna keep the vehicle for another six years or eight years to be able to see the difference?
No matter which body we use, I expect the body, particularly in this case, to transfer to the new truck. So when we replace the ten-wheeler, um, we will just bid out a cabin chassis and transfer the body, no matter which one we buy.
Understood.
We are hoping, though, that these bodies, we can get twenty years out of a body. I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're hoping to see.
Steve?
Would this dump body be, what's the best way to put it? Is it, is it universal that if you said you wanted to go a different chassis? In other words, would it, would, is it gonna force you into a certain make, model, and truck?
No, no, it shouldn't. They, they mount to the rails of the trucks, and I believe it's a fairly standard.
So, so we're saying that, listen, I'm not sure what the dimensions of the, of the, of the dump body is. So you're saying whatever other, next time, when they, when you go out for a bid, you're not strapped to any particular vehicle?
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. All in favor of?
Oh, we need a motion.
That's right. Uh, sorry.
Motion to accept the bid from Tenko, New England, for the truck body stainless steel upgrade and the spreader control.
Second. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
You must have something else. Don't, don't run. I mean, I know we were, I'm sorry, we were, it wasn't on the agenda, but we were playing a little phone tag. Do you want to touch that now or that something?
Sure, you know what, I, I will. Um, I was trying to get Steve to say no. He was really interested in this. You know, we've been working on the, I'll call it the bike shoulder of Mass Road, for lack of a better thing. And, um, though we have the right-of-way, uh, to, to do the project, there's that one area where the right-of-way gets really tight, near the fence and the house. When we, we visited the site with, uh, Alan from Continental, our paid-in contractor, and, and looked at the project with him, first thing he thought of, which quite frankly, we should have thought of when we started this, but he says, geez, wouldn't it be easier to just shift the paint lines over and get the same thing you're trying to get to? And we, so we kind of took a step back from the project and took a look at it. And, though I don't think, um, just simply shifting the lines would work everywhere, I think it gains us quite a bit right there. So if the board, not that you really have the decision you need to make, um, but if you want to take a look, if you go down to that section, you'll see there are paint spots, white paint spots. Every couple hundred feet down the road, we basically painted dots just how the lines would shift over if we were to try to do that.
This would be the fog line.
Yeah, so, uh, I think where, the direction we're heading, and I'll leave it that, uh, if, if anybody looks at it and says, geez, that just doesn't make sense, feel free to give me an email or a call, uh, because we're not committed to this. But I think what we're leaning towards is, in that particular area, shift it over a little bit. It'll mean having to actually widen the shoulder on the other side of the road just a little bit, you know, a foot or two. But it will hopefully avoid a major resetting of that fence and, and really getting into that, that sideline. Uh, and then, of course, we'll have to, you know, uh, scrape out the lines and repaint lines right there. But it'll, we'll widen a little bit on both sides there, and then as we move beyond that, it'll, you know, it should be right back on. The rest of it's pretty straightforward.
Is this by the ramps?
Yes, yeah. Uh, I am gonna go down and meet with them again and show them the survey plans. But, you know, e- e- even if we were to move the fence, there's quite a bit of work there. There's a slope, the lilac bushes, there's some telephone poles there. So it's, it's just very tight right in that area. So, our feeling was if we could shift away just a little bit and gain some, some room.
This, this, I'm sorry, can I?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. The shoulder, the, the width of the shoulder that we're adding is roughly how wide?
We're looking at a five-foot minimum, but five to seven is what we're trying to get, if we can get seven.
And over there, when you do the shift, what will you end up with? In other words, you're saying, hey, we'll be five there, and we'll put another one on the other side? I'm trying to...
Well, it'd probably be, uh, we'd probably hopefully end up with three or four that we pave there, and then a couple on the other side and kind of shift everything over.
So you're shifting all the lines?
Well, we'd have to blend, you know, as we went through there, we'd, we'd blend it back into...
And this would start as you go past the, I'm gonna call it the health, the health, the antiques?
Yeah.
So you start right about there, and you would do that shift, shift there, and then it would just come back to, to it normally?
Right.
So, linear-wise, you're talking three hundred feet?
Yeah, maybe. You know, you, obviously you want it to be smooth, and we want to blend it all in right. So it's, you know, we, if you, if you stand back and kind of sight those dots, you can get a pretty good feel for it. And, uh, I don't think people will really notice it when it's all said and done, uh, once everything's...
Doesn't create any issues on the other side?
It's tight on the other side, too. That whole, that whole little, it's like a little bottleneck right there. It's just, because on the other side, you get a little slight slope, too, so... But it's, it's making the best use of the flat area in between the slopes.
So basically, we're doing that instead of going into the right-of-way?
Well, it, it'll lessen how much we have to cut in that slope. That slope is the biggest challenge of that whole project, so this, this will minimize how much slope cutting we have to do.
Any other questions, Carl?
Maybe, conceptually, I understand everything he's saying about that particular three hundred feet. Do we want to say okay tonight? Is any further discussion, or come back together Monday, next Monday? Concur with his plans?
Maybe.
Oh, it'll be a while.
Well, that's what Carl said, that we didn't have to make a decision tonight. We wanted to go look at it. So, next Monday then?
I do have one last question, and I realize that we're talking something probably way down the road, because we've always, there's always been a thing that you, we wouldn't, that that was actually, should be a sidewalk instead of what we're doing.
Right.
If we were, unless, say, twenty years down the road, and they said, hey, we're gonna, they're gonna finally do the sidewalk because they're changing, because you talked about the piping and the drains, that's when that would be done, if it was to be done, would you be dealing with that same slope issue then?
Yeah. So it still is good that you're gonna talk to the property owner?
Right.
Discuss where the boundary lines?
And, and we may, we may have to still reset just the very corner of the fence, because it's, I mean, that's right out there, and that's quite a ways out in the right-of-way. But, uh, when, when you get beyond the driveway, it starts to go up the slope, and then we're talking about resetting the fence and lilac bushes and slope, and it gets a lot more complex.
Carl, how wide is the bike path plan currently? What's the width of that?
Well, like I said, we were, we were, we were hoping to get at least five to seven feet of a lane. Right in there, it necks down to its narrowest point. We, we're...
So how will that be in the wintertime? And I'm just thinking, you know, when we push snow over with a five-to-seven-foot lane, you're gonna still have some area to walk. How will it be in that area where? We're gonna lose it at that point?
No, but our, our concern is with the fence. When we push the snow, it's, it's just so narrow there that, uh, if we put it all on that side, we'll, we'll just take that fence right off when we go by with the plows. There's the snow and everything, so we're trying to gain as much away as we can.
So by shifting it, you'll be able to still plow and still retain, have some area to walk?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it?
All good.
All right, so what are we gonna do? Are we going to just, uh, wait till next week? Or?
There's no need to wait for, I mean, he's proceeding. I mean, I, I mean, there's no...
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot to do down there, and all that other end, it's no question. We'll, we'll just start down that end. There's, there's not a big rush.
Do we need a motion to accept your recommendation for shifting the lines?
I mean, we could, we could. I mean, if everybody's comfortable, that's fine. I mean, if you want to do it now.
Yes.
And that's a motion?
Second it.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
I'd rather see it done properly, but we'll, we'll go on the way it's going.
Okay, it's, uh, four ones, zero.
Ted Stevens.
Four ones, zero.
Okay.
If I didn't belabor it, I knew what it was going.
All right, next item is the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you have your weekly schedule in your packets. Your consensus folder tonight includes AP warrants, an event permit license for the motorcycle fundraiser for Vietnam vets and, um, put on by the Milford, VFW Post Forty-three, Sixty-eight. That's contingent on getting the certificate of insurance that was supposed to arrive today. Didn't arrive. Uh, employee status report, a proclamation for the garden club to be presented next week, notice of lien, CLG grant for the historic survey at Parker Station. And, uh, it's an additional form. You'd already voted on this, but the state has an additional form to fill out. And a raffle permit for Maple Ave, Mountview Middle School Destination Imagination Team.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Can I just go back on one thing? Just wanted everybody to know that the meeting, the weekly meeting schedule, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth meeting on Thursday is in a butter meeting. We're hap, for the block party. So we sent a letter out to all the abutting business owners and residents around this area to, uh, fill them in as to what the plans are, to get their ideas. And have some modest street col, street closures. Church Street will be closed, a portion of it, Mill Street. But we wanted to have that meeting with folks. So if there's anybody who is a resident in the area that may be affected, it's, uh, seven o'clock this Thursday. And I probably should have said that under announcements, so I apologize, but...
Okay, so for clarity, clarity here?
Yeah.
That meeting that's in this, uh, that says seven PM is actually in a butters meeting?
Yeah.
Is, is it part of your regular me, a regular meeting?
It was, it was specific to, um, having any of the residents in this area, uh, present to them what were our conceptual plan, get feedback and try to, trying to fine-tune it. That was it. It is not, uh, that is, that is the sole reason for having it.
Okay.
We don't want anybody to be surprised, Phil, you know, down the road, especially the neighbors who live around here.
No. Okay. Next item there, Sue?
Okay, and to correspond, you have a, a letter of resignation from Kelly Von Ruden as an alternate conservation. And we will send her a letter thanking her for her service.
Okay.
Uh, assessors' recommendations, veterans' tax credits, map seven, lot eighty-four.
Uh, I think we should take a motion, though, to accept the resignation.
Yeah, uh, so moved.
With regrets?
Yep, with regrets.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Okay, your assessors' recommendations, you have veterans' tax credits, map seven, lot eighty-four. Elderly exemptions, map six, lot twenty-two, thirty-one, map fifteen, lot ninety-seven, and map sixteen, lot one-twenty-eight, one-eighty-eight, and two oh one dash one.
Motion to accept the assessors' recommendations.
Is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Excuse me, who was the second? I didn't, was it? Appointment, um, Cable Committee recommends the appointment of Jason Cody as an alternate member to the committee until March thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
Scott?
Did I miss his, his, uh, application in here, or was it not in here?
It wasn't in there. No. He did submit one, right? It was based on the motion of the minutes. Right. We're looking to get the...
I, I just have a hard time voting for someone that I, we haven't even seen his application. So could we defer this one more week ago?
Sure.
Okay, also you have a bid award recommendation for electrical, electrical work at Grassmere Town Hall. There were three bidders. New Wave, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Susie Electric, the thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and Town Line Electric at fourteen thousand, two forty-three. The Historic District Commission reviewed the bids, and the details are outlined in a memo at five B, and they recommend the low bidder, Town Line Electric.
Any more?
Just a quick question. In the past, usually when we look at these, we look at the, uh, this, the high, the low, look at the middle, and there's a huge spread between the top two and the, the recommended. From a high of fifty-nine, six, and thirty-four, nine, to the low of fourteen.
And they're trailing from little mass.
Yeah, we sure that this is an accurate, do they, are they?
Yes, Derek contacted them. Yeah, it is. They've worked on the project before. So they are, one thing that you have, one thing he has, is that he is familiar with the building. He is, uh, familiar with the electrical system. Uh, he's the one who did the work in the hallway, so he tied those circuits into the existing panel that's in there.
So you're comfortable with this?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just, that was my thing, is that, you know, we've seen these before, and we were, and many times we've asked just to rebid them again because they were so, they're so far off. But this person has done work already.
Yeah.
So...
And he did it for the price he quoted the last time.
That's right.
And just, just sort of, just to, uh, refresh, this would then, what, this is for the upstairs? This, I mean, what, what area are they doing, or does this?
For the second, uh, and second floor?
The staging area, is that what I'm thinking?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's for the, it's for the, um, uh, capacity that we're looking for, the, um, uh, where the project is now for up to forty-nine people.
And then this puts you at a situation that, from an electrical end, you're all set up there if you wanted to utilize the, utilize that floor?
Right, for forty-nine people, not for assembly usage, for forty-nine.
I understand the forty-nine, okay.
Yeah, right, okay. We're going back to what it was before.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
So we need a motion then?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the H D C, uh, the H D C's recommendation to proceed with Town Line Electric for a bid of fourteen thousand, two forty-three.
That's the H D C Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, I apologize.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Enclosed at Tab Five C in your packets, you have a draft agreement with the town and officials elected to local positions for health insurance. I think we've covered everything. Do you see anything else that needs to be in there?
We, um, didn't we talk about, um, I mean, we don't want to chase down the payments, which it, which it speaks to. Should we ask for one month upfront, two months?
Well, they, they have to pay by the tenth for the following month.
I know that, but do we?
And if they miss, they risk losing till the following year.
It's total on that.
Why don't we see what happens? If, if, if there's an issue, then we can revisit.
I, I reached out on our listserv to see other people's experience, other towns' experience. The ones that have done it have not had any kind of collection problems.
Okay.
But I thought we had talked possibly going quarterly, um...
Oh, and they, they can do that if they want, but...
No, but I mean, I thought, meaning as from, 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 uh, an accounting end in time.
We pay the bill monthly for employees, so we'll just include them.
I would just be hesitant to place a financial burden on someone to try to, you know, come up four, four months worth of...
To come up with four grand.
Could be more, that could be, yeah.
But if they want to do that, they can. There's no prohibition against it.
And I, I had, I had one, just one question on it, on the last sentence. It says, uh, that the coverage would terminate the end of March?
If they're not reelected.
Uh, I, is that standard in, or, the only reason I'm saying, because of the amount of time, is it appropriate to add one additional month?
This is how L G C works, so...
Oh, okay. No, no, that's fine. That was just a question that I had. They would be, they would be paying the bill on the tenth of February?
Right.
Assuming reelection, but then if they weren't?
They wouldn't pay in the tenth of March.
Cobra requirements, like a, an employee that?
No, they're not employees.
Yeah, but you see, that's... Well... If the bill is due the tenth, this is, this is...
It, it may be prorated. I mean, I think that may occur.
Okay, so I assume...
You would pay a prorated amount.
Or they would get a refund?
Or a refund, right.
Okay, but I mean...
It'll be covered for the month of March, so when they pay February tenth, it'll be covered for the whole month of March.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. I didn't real, I didn't, I didn't know if you were going from the tenth to the tenth.
No.
The tenth is just a mechanism to make sure that, that they get it in on time.
Right.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept the draft agreement, uh, with respect to elected officials, uh, purchasing their own health insurance.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Does this include dental?
No, it doesn't. Dental's a different plan, different plan. I don't know if they open up dental. We didn't inquire about dental.
I thought, see, I was under the impression that it was dental as well.
Well, when you said the insurance, I assumed it was.
I assumed it was.
It was.
It was the only health insurance that we, that was ever asked of us.
Yeah, I, I assumed it was dental as well.
Right.
You didn't assume that?
This helped to me.
See, I assumed...
I lost the bait of that.
I didn't assume dental either.
You didn't?
No.
No, I did.
I don't know if they offer it, dental, to elected officials.
Can we find out?
Yeah.
I mean, I, we could take a vote later, but if they don't even offer it, then it's a moot point.
Right, okay.
Okay, um, you also have a request with Pax Rec Director for sign. Oh, so you didn't take the vote? Yes, they took a vote.
Yeah, five, zero.
Five, zero, zero. Oh, I didn't write it down, sorry. What was going on with the common?
One, I'll recall it.
Just so I know. Um, request in Pax Rec Director for signs of the common, rec requests, uh, small signs in the common reminding people they're responsible for picking up after the dog. There has been issues there and...
I gotta say something here.
Go ahead.
I, I appreciate when they say you gotta have a sign, but people who don't pick it up, no. This, this is not, I mean, a, a sign doesn't, um...
And he realizes the signs...
I know, I mean, I mean, people who bring their dogs to the common should have the decency to pick it up, and a sign isn't gonna tell them, "Oh, I didn't know that." I mean, that's just my, my thought on this one.
Well, let, let me, let me just throw something out there then. If this is an issue for the common, okay? Is it something that the board would want to look in to see about, um, some type of an ordinance for the common?
Dog fouling ordinance?
No, perhaps for the common, and the only reason why I'm saying, uh, I'm not particularly fond of these types of things, but, uh, the fact that the common belongs to, to community?
You know what? If I may, can I speak to the Parks and Rec Director? I have a meeting on Wednesday, let's, let's see how, how egregious or bad the problem is. I, I, I'm just curious. I, I, I mean, I walked, I didn't... I don't know.
He's seeing it when the workers pick up the, uh, trash barrels. Closer inspection.
Because, yeah, the, the other issue, again, we, we can, you know, kind of poke fun at it a little bit, but it be- it does become a health issue, too, I mean, if it's, if that's the case. So, there's little kids who are there and it's not... Let me talk to Rick and...
Why, why, can I just make a suggestion? Why don't you do that? And if you need to touch base with prosecutor or the chief? And just see, 'cause maybe there's, if it's an issue, maybe there's some other way, I mean, I'm not crazy about adding...
I wouldn't be surprised if we have a similar issue at Glen Lake and some other, you know, other parks as well. I, I, that's why, I just wanna see what is the scope of the issue.
I, I understand, but I just don't wanna have an officer out on poop patrol.
Yeah.
You know, giving out tickets. We have enough issues as we already have.
I'll take care of the problem.
Okay.
I had that same problem with my neighbor, I took care of it.
You didn't shoot the dog now, did you?
I just took care of the problem, Phil.
Okay, Phil.
Put in charge of this one.
Thank you, you're in charge.
You meant like the outcome? The problem will be solved.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, you also have a request from Cert. to display, uh, awards at Town Hall. They have gotten, the past three years, they've gotten Presidential Service Awards, and they would like to place them somewhere here.
Any idea how big they are?
Oh, they're eight and a half by eleven.
Okay, uh, do they say where would they like?
Somewhere where the public can see them.
Oh, I maybe here?
Yeah.
Do, do you have an idea?
Oh, yeah, we, we can find a place.
Yeah, or maybe even upstairs.
Uh, so moved.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you. You have requests for overnight conferences. Um, there's a memo from the Chief of Police requesting authorization for him to attend three overnight conferences, and for the accreditation manager to attend one overnight conference. Also, um, I noticed in the minutes today, and I talked to Dick Gagnon, the Cable Minutes, um, they were approving him, and I said, "No, that has to come to the board" to attend an overnight conference for, um, their regional A C M. What is it? Community, Community Media, um, for New, uh, the Northeast Regional Conference in New Haven, Connecticut. Cost of that is about five hundred dollars.
So, that's an additional request that we have that's not here?
That's an additional request that was not in your packet.
Good.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with the, the chief's request. I don't think there's a, I don't have an issue with the one for, uh, cable.
I'm good, Joe. I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, conferences overnight.
Including the one for cable?
Yeah, all three.
Yes, I'll second those.
Any further question?
I'm just looking at the accreditation, the, is that Police Communications? Is that coming out of Police Communications? Is that the only employee, because what I have is fifteen hundred dollars under Police Communications for employee development?
Yeah, she's, she may be in Communications, but she's the accreditation manager for the department.
She's the credit manager.
Right.
Any further questions?
Just a comment, I...
No, I'm just gonna make a comment.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, comment being, I know when Carl was here, we, we, we kinda said, geez, is there a way that we have, do you need all of them? Or can we take a lesser number?
I would, I can respond. I, I think that was a situation where those were week-long, way out of state, whereas this one, there was one that is in Chicago, but then the other ones are in New Hampshire. I don't think that those are exorbitant in terms of the cost. Um, I think that's the key difference, that was the key difference for me. I, I, I would agree with you, but I just didn't, I, I saw one of them was literally, you know, Conway is not exactly, that's a hop, skip and a jump from here. There's no airfare, you know?
But it's a thousand dollars.
Yeah. For both.
All right. And, and I'll just speak for myself. I, I look at the employee development as people taking classes, getting certified in, you know, development, and New Hampshire Chiefs, New Hampshire Chiefs, International Association of Chiefs of Police. I agree, these are good organizations to belong to, they have their merit, but I think at some point you say, okay, you know, pick one or two that you wanna go to, but, you know, we're, we don't know some of the financial implications of things coming down the line and... I think at some point we have to pull back a little, it's not business as usual.
Yeah, I, I, I underst- I understand your, your concern. Um, one thing, though, that I would say, well, it's two comments, actually, is, uh, these are, uh, meetings for organizations that department heads belong to that are necessary for them being a department head, that they are. And number two, uh, I think that, and we've had this discussion, uh, i- that if that money comes out of that line for employee development, I think that's, should be up to the department head to, if he's aware that it's coming out of that, that it's up to the department head, and he should have the discretion of how he wants to handle that in his department, because he's aware of, uh, of, of anybody else that's going in for, uh, employee development. And if I don't see any further comments or questions, I'll just call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It's, uh, Carrie's three, two, zero.
Thank you. Uh, you also have in your packet a five E inter municipal agreements for the fire dispatch with the towns of Lear and New Boston. These are three-year agreements for your consideration. If there are no changes by the board, then the chief will submit this to the A G's office for review.
Scott?
In reviewing them, can we perhaps discuss the benefit of a three-year agreement, considering that any party can get out of it within thir- in thirty days? What's the point of having a three-year agreement? And I, I say that because it, it just, why, why not, it should just be like one year, if that's the case? I mean, you can, you could do three-year, but it just hasn't, doesn't seem to make...
I think it provides some stability, knowing that it, for the next three years, unless someone gets out of it, the cost is gonna remain the same. I, I guess it could change. You'd get out of it and then have to get back into it.
But then again, does it handcuff, I mean, it provides stability to both communities, so we know we'll have a certain set of, of revenue for the next three years. But then you could also argue, although there is an opt-out for us, then we do not have any opportunity to even raise it even one or two percent, because it's locked in. So, I don't know.
I, I understand you, that question. Um, but I think the, what this does offer is that both parties can look at it as a three-year agreement. And as far as planning, uh, what needs to be done as far as the, uh, dispatch, uh, service, uh, for both parties, uh, gives them a little bit, um, more feeling of comfortable, being comfortable with the agreement that they're gonna invest into something. In other words, where, uh, and New Boston would tend to provide funding for anything that they needed a, a little bit better on a three-year contract than a, than a one-year contract, and vice versa, I think.
I guess part of it is that I don't, I see that as more advantageous to, this is more advantageous to the other two communities than it is to Goffstown. That's, that's just my concern. There's no, there's no penalty if they just, now, if they decide a year from now that they have a better situation, there's really no penalty for them. I guess you could argue that we could, we could, a year from now, we could say we need a nominal increase, and they could say, okay, or they can say no as well, but there's no, there is no penalty, um, you know, for them.
Part of the agreement is that, uh, is that they're not going to renegotiate within that three years, so like, as what you're saying is that if I am the other community and I, I wanna move on, there's nothing that holds me, there's nothing binding, I just move on, and there's, and there could be no re- according to the, well, at least the first one, I haven't caught the second one, the first request is that they cannot, either party can, can, can request to change the amount. But yet, you know, I mean, also, we can't, I mean, you know, I mean, the other party can leave, I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense, is what, is that what you're saying?
What?
Or, or the number of calls could increase.
Right. I don't know.
Okay. The one thing that I, I look at on here, and that's more for our, our sake, is it's a month-by-month lease, if you read this, but yet we may set our budget based on the fact that these leases are in place. So, I don't know if there's a way, a mechanism, that maybe that lease amount is paid upfront, and you're locked into that year. So, if we budget that we're going to have these two communities, you know, we're providing dispatch service and they're paying for it, then at a minimum, they should be obligated to that one year that we've anticipated that revenue. And then have the timing of the agreement such that if we, if either party decides to get out of it, we're looking at that in a timely fashion to make our adjustments for the next budget year.
I agree.
So, you want annual commitment and an annual payment?
I would think if, if we are counting on that revenue in our budget...
Right, if we're going to say that it's gonna be this price for the next three years, then if you decide that you wanna opt-out in June, well, you're in it for the entire year, because we budgeted revenue for the entire year. And it would not be fair to us to do that.
Well, perhaps what we would want then is we would want payment after, um, their budget is approved.
After the county meeting.
On the, on, I think they're both on, uh, same fiscal year.
March.
Yeah, they're both on...
They're March, I mean...
Well, I don't think it matters what their budget is, because that'll be part of, they have an agreement with us.
No, I understand, but if, what we're in right now is rather changing midstream.
Right.
Where I'm coming from, I think they're in the same budget cycle that we are.
Right.
So, they're, they're, they're appropriating their expenditure while we're going through anticipating a revenue.
Right.
At the same time, so if perhaps, uh, we can agree at, let's say, March thirty-first, April fifteenth, or whatever the date is, is that we have payment for the year, perhaps.
Okay.
You know, we're talking about only fourteen thousand dollars between the two of them.
Well, that...
And I just did the math, it's fourteen thousand.
A year?
For, for both of them combined.
Okay.
And my next question's going to be at fourteen thousand regarding staffing. What is, what is that like? I mean, are we staffing for this, is there...
No, we're not staffing for this and, and...
I mean, does anyone, I mean, for the equipment upgrades, things of that nature?
They pay for that.
They pay for that.
They pay for that?
Yeah.
See, we've gone through this before.
I know, it, it just doesn't seem like a...
And we, and you could argue we shot ourselves in the foot in the last one, but...
I know, but it's, it's not a lot.
I think the theory is that we need X number of dispatchers to handle our call volume. So, these contracts don't add to that. These people would be there. So, it, I guess it's kind of a cost benefit to us by accepting these.
Yeah, to, to sum up, I think what it says, and to answer your question, is if we didn't do these contracts, the money that we're receiving as a revenue, are we going to, uh, have as an equal amount of savings on the expenditure side? No, we're not, we're gonna have the same expenditures, we're just not gonna have the revenue.
Cause, well, I mean, it's like, um, it might not apply to our conversation right now, but I always look at, you know, when we had these contracts, it was, you know, here you have the Boston, where, et cetera. And, and we look at the cost of us to run our dispatch, and the, was the last, the number that's sticking in my head is six hundred thousand. How does a community walk, two communities walk away at fourteen thousand, and we're sitting here at six hundred thousand? I've got no idea at this, I mean, we talk about this every year.
It's only, it's only fire, right?
It's firing police, isn't it?
No, this is just fire.
We don't have police anymore.
I mean, this, I mean, it makes you wonder, I, I don't understand the math.
Yeah, the, the other thing I would say is that, you know, we're at a point where you can argue that maybe we did shoot ourselves in the foot with the, the last one. I'm not sure if that was totally our fault, but for fourteen thousand dollars, in my opinion, it's not worth a three-year deal. It's just not. It's a one-year, year-deal. If we were, if they were to both walk tomorrow, we just talked about absorbing X amount on a, on a steel body of a, of a, for eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, I, I think we do want these communities, we want more communities to come into our dispatch, and that'd be great, but it, for fourteen thousand, I just don't know if we wanna lock ourselves in. I just, that's just my take.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
I think this is the conversation we have at the time when the police chief comes in and says, "You know what? We're getting so busy in communications, we need to hire more people." Then we may wanna look at, say, okay, how much is it gonna cost to hire more dispatchers verse, versus how much time will we free up if we didn't have these contracts? And that may allow us to go that much further without getting those extra people by eliminating these other contracts that have been nice, they bring in revenue, but, um, take up some time. But I don't think that's a conversation we need to have now, because it's, it's not gonna reduce our costs in the dispatch. So, it's revenue we're getting. It wouldn't be there.
The other, the other issue is what, what Selecton Fornier said, and, and I don't know the answer to this per se. We have over a six hundred thousand dollar dispatch budget. I know this is only a small component of it, but even before when we had police, you know, when we saw some of those breakdowns, but it just seems kind of nutty that we've got a community like where, how can where, who has, let's say, half the population, even s- or forty percent of our population, spend like ten percent? I don't think they spend more than sixty thousand dollars on dispatch total between police and fire. But yet, we've got a population that's, you know, sixty percent more or whatever, and we're spending, if we take out all the revenue, we're at five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for dispatch. I don't get that.
Well, if you look at the service that they get, and where, when you call up, uh, the police, call up police at nighttime, what's the answer, or in daytime, what do you get? You get a recording. How many people call up there? Do, do, do you wanna call up Goffstown P D?
No, I, I don't know, see, I don't know that, you know? No, I, I don't know, see, I don't know that, you know?
Yeah, the other part, when we, when we were charging them, they weren't getting a recording. They were getting a person, correct? I mean, otherwise, when people were calling nine-one-one, it would kick right into ours, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, it's not a recording, is what I'm trying to get at.
No, when you say for, for a non-emergency.
That's a different story.
They're, they're, they're getting a recording? I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to belabor this one, I just.
I, I just.
I apologize. Maybe something to discuss at, at another, at another point, but, um, I'll just leave it at this. I don't see a benefit personally to have a three-year deal. I, I just don't. I think year-to-year is fine, you know, and you're gonna, and you're committing to that one year. So you let us know when we're doing our budgets, are you with us or are you not with us? If you're with us, and you're going to sign for that whole year, whether you want to go and pull out, two or three months later into the year, you're still committed for that fiscal year. And then we'll, we'll take it, um, take it as is. If that means that the rate needs to slightly increase because our costs are always increasing, then we should be able to share that. I mean, if the call, and if the calls go up, and if we're taking more calls, I see, I just don't, I, I don't, I understand we don't want to lose the revenue because we did that with New Boston, but, but the same token, I always feel like we're getting a little bit, the short end of the stick here, because we're, we're really, we're, it seems like we're sucking up all the, the cost.
Hey?
I, I don't mind going in your direction, but to me, to implement something like that would be, we would like to enter in this, uh, into this agreement in November. And it would cover the months of January to this, to December. I mean, is that workable?
Yeah, because then we can budget for it and we budget that, we budget, and we budget the revenue. And we know they're committed, it's a rock-solid number.
So. In this case, we would want to, uh, enter into just a, a one-year agreement. And, you know, under the terms of the agreement, we would want to renegotiate it in November.
Or those negotiations would take place in September or something, so it gives them a couple of months to, to talk, but in November, we'd want to, we'd want an answer for the following year.
Nick? And then maybe in the interim, there's only so many dispatch centers around, maybe we should do our homework and find out what the rates are out there so that we still remain a a viable alternative.
Right.
So that we're not simply taking a community that's been working with us for all these years and, and pricing ourselves out so it's more beneficial for them to go elsewhere.
I'll just add one comment. I said, I say, I take the opposite approach with you when you're looking at this. I look at it that I would prefer to have the three-year term rather than a one-year term. It's just like the lease of Mary Lou. We used to do a lease, uh, Mary Lou every year. Did we change it to a two, uh, to two? We've always wanted to, anything, it just seems like, it just seems like we're looking at this because the grass appears to be, we're on the opposite side of the fence. If we had a one-year term on this, I would, I wouldn't be surprised if we would sit here having this discussion saying, well, why is it only one year and not three-year? But it's coming to us as a three-year and we're looking at it that we want it as one. I just, I just look at this as far as being able to plan that we have a three-year agreement. The only thing is, is that if there's some reason, and either party can get out within thirty days. I mean, we've had a working relationship with these communities and that's what it is. I mean.
I guess I respectfully disagree with that because we had these long working relationships and then to save five grand, New Boston pulled out, and this one pulled out to go to Bo.
Well, but, but, but wait, 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 we're looking at different departments. This is not police. This is fire department.
I know. I understand that, but it's the same board of selectmen in New Boston who, for five thousand dollars, bolted to another place.
They did it for functionality too, because of the software.
Okay. Right.
Right.
They did, they did go.
But they're gone.
Right. I mean, I would recommend that we, we, we take, we accept what's in front of us.
We only need thirty days to get out of it, so it doesn't bind us.
And, yeah, the only other part, like I say, I, I, for me, and like I say, I, I, when I look at the cost of what it costs us to run our dispatcher, then I look at this, uh, it doesn't make much sense. But then the other part is that now I'm looking at that, not only is it, not only we're not changing the rates from last year, we're going to go three more years at the same rate. I'd like to think that somewhere along the line, our costs are going to go up.
Wasn't there something in, in the memo though, that they are paying to certify our dispatchers in fire?
They are paying.
The training.
And what cost is that? Just so I know, I have no idea.
I don't know.
But are they paying for the cost of living raise, the two percent? Are they, are they paying for that? And are they paying for the increased health insurance every year?
No.
Okay. And that's my, that's my issue, is that we talk about revisiting fees, and now we're in this catch twenty-two because it's a market. This is a market where, where they can shop to another town, and that, and that's the slippery slope here. We could say, hey, we want a two percent more, and they could say, that's great, we're going to go to another town to, to get it done. And then we lose fourteen thousand dollars of revenue because we wanted two percent more to cover our costs.
The one, and that goes back to what I was saying earlier about getting other prices. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the town of Goffstown developed their own dispatch center. We bear the burden of the equipment and the people. When a community goes out to get dispatch services, they don't say, well, you're going to need three, they, they have a list of how many call, what's your call volume? You have three thousand calls a year? It's X number of dollars. And unfortunately, they typically don't bear the same percentage or the same costs as the dispatch center. There's that infrastructure that we maintain. So to say that they should have twenty percent or thirty percent of our six hundred and ninety thousand dollars is, is not an accurate assumption.
And I see, I, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, this is one area where we, when we talk about regionalization and sharing ladder trucks and this and that, I cannot fathom why, if we're trying to save money all across the state, why we do not have regional dispatch centers, you know, throughout the state who dispatch calls. Um, you save a ton of money. I mean, I just don't understand. I, and I know we've got a great dispatch center, and maybe ours should be the one. Maybe we should get awarded the bid. But I, I just don't understand why we have one, right across the street, there's another one, Bedford's got another one, Manchester's got another one. And so you've got all these redundancies here, and then we've got two people, you know, I mean, you could combine them all and you can, you can, you can, you had two people in this town, two people in this town, two people in this town. You can do it for three people to do all three towns for the nighttime. Um, but no, we, everybody has to have their own. I mean, that's just my, I don't, I don't get it.
Nick? That's a different conversation because I'm, I'm in line with you on that because if the day ever came that we went to another regional dispatch, we would be sitting in the same position as these communities. Because we wouldn't be bearing the cost of the infrastructure and the people. We would be paying a per-call cost. But until that day comes, we're looking at additional revenue to supplement the people that we would have to keep on duty anyway. Our call volume mandates that number of dispatchers that we have, so.
That's correct.
I mean, I agree, we should look at other costs, maybe get competitive.
Then it's time, then maybe that's a goal for this year because whether we decide that we want to be that regional dispatch center and invest in, in the software and, 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 and market it, or look elsewhere so that we're the ones buying the service for X amount of calls, but the time has come. I mean, I, I don't understand how we can spend six hundred grand plus and other towns that are half our size are spending sixty or eighty.
Respect the point, this fourteen thousand doesn't even cover probably some of the healthcare packages.
Doesn't cover one.
Doesn't cover one healthcare package. It's a deal.
It's a great deal. But to your point, Nick, we don't know what the market is, and this is a market right now.
I agree. But I don't think we can haphazardly just throw a number out there. We need to find out what the market is.
Well, why don't I suggest that we go forward with what we have in front of us and we'll have that conversation with both chiefs?
I'm sorry, Phil. I just, I just, I just don't think a three-year deal gives us anything other than fourteen thousand dollars of guaranteed revenue and if it was, if it was fifty or a hundred, I'd be there with you, but I know fourteen thousand here adds up and fourteen thousand there, but for me, it's just not worth going to a three-year deal. One year, I'm good. I'm not, I'm not good on three.
Well, I just, I just have a concern too that, you know, if we don't do this, what we've had, that we're sending a message, and I, I don't know how that message in this, after what's happened with police dispatch, I'm just have a concern on how that message is going to be received.
You want to go to two?
What, what was our last one? Wasn't it a one-year?
I thought they were three years all along.
I don't think so, but.
No, they didn't get to be three years until town meeting passed out.
It's cheap now? Cheap, do you know?
I thought they were three years.
You couldn't do before because we didn't have the opportunity to enter more, enter more than a one-year deal, then, and then we pass, we pass town meetings, you go up to five.
Right. One-year agreement. Town meeting. Right.
Yeah.
Just a question.
It says I put them at three years. So that sounds like it's a change.
But I, I. This is dated lease made and entered into this first day of April. So am I to assume that we are out of lease right now?
Yes.
And the second question I have is why do we always waste? It seems like we go around this all the time. Why is this coming to us now and not in March?
So.
Just hang on a second.
Do you know?
No, I don't. I just got it.
So if I, if I get a clear understanding, let's just say if it was, the last contract was a two-year contract, and now we're looking at a three-year contract, we're saying for five years, the price hasn't changed? Is that my understanding of this?
Yeah.
For five years, the price will not have changed? For fourteen thousand dollars. In other words, if.
Oh, it went up last time.
No, it says right here, what, what I'm reading here, if I'm reading it correctly, they're saying that the price is the same as.
Uh, on this one, there's no price increase. But last time we did a renewal, I think there was a price increase.
I understand it. Well, if the last one was not an increase and it was a two-year contract and we're using the same pricing structure coming up.
I'm not sure it was two years.
No, but they're also paying for our dispatchers to become certified, as was mentioned.
All, uh, all I'm saying right now though is that regarding this agreement here, that has been the same price for five years. And we talk about market issues, well, sometimes you're, you know, and I understand that very well, but maybe we're driving the market and maybe other surrounding communities are driving the market by saying, hey, we'll take it at this low bid because it offsets a little bit. And, you know, it, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense, you know, it, for me, I, 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 you know, I don't want to belabor this, belabor this anymore. I, I, I think when we go into these contracts like this and it's five years, the price hasn't changed, it's not a large amount, yeah, it is, it is a revenue, I agree with that, but it, if, it puts in, it, it, it just doesn't sit well. And I, I don't agree with this. I won't support it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I, I hear everything you're saying and, and we could perhaps make one modification to this and say the term ends at the end of this year, December thirty-first. On the other hand, we could accept it as is for three years, and then in November of this year, we could make it known to the two communities perhaps there's a need for a price change. It's a, it's it's all part of the agreement to allow us to, uh, put that in place. So it's, uh, I, I'm, I'm torn as to which way would be best, just to go with three years and you could have changes as the period progresses? Or do you, where, the risk is sending a message, you know, like Selectmen have said that you're, you want to terminate this in December, or, and say only last till December, what's the message there?
Do you have a comment?
No, I just, I assume just call the vote.
Okay. And the motion is?
There isn't one.
Make a motion to extend a one-year lease agreement.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion?
One, with clarification is what we, Sue had meant, what we just talked about, about this would get, be to the end of this year, and then we would need a decision, you know, in November as to do they want to apply for next year. Right? So that we would pen this for like October or so, have, the chief would have a conversation with them, or be with us, want to change the price, not change the price, and then there would be some sort of commitment for the following year so we can, and then they're locked in. As long as we're all good with that, I'm good with that one.
That's fine, I'm going with that. No, I just have a concern about the message that's sent in since the chief has had discussion with the three years. And, uh, now that the board of selectmen's not going to approve what he's had that discussion, I just have a concern of the message that that's sending.
Just thinking maybe a, um, a letter or something from the board to those communities, basically saying something to the effect that in these uncertain financial times, we're extending the contract to the end of the year, but we need some time to examine, you know, all, we're examining all, all of our contracts and agreements with, um, communities and entities and.
But you see, that's the, what I'm saying, if they're looking, if they're anticipating a three-year contract, and a board of selectmen doesn't give a three-year contract, they approve a one-year contract and they get a letter from that, if I'm sitting there and the others, the receiver of that, I'm looking at that and the handwriting on the wall is, start looking for another place to do your dispatching. That's the message that I, I, the way I interpret that. So.
Would that be continuing business as usual? Haven't we had one-year contracts up until now?
Oh, and this is, and, and these are the same two communities that we are entering into an agreement that we're going to cover their fire calls. This is the same community that's, that struck Ware, who has struggled, New Boston that struggled. So if that's the game that they want to play, which I don't think that they would, I mean, I think we do have a very good relationship with these communities. I, I, I would, I would hope that they would understand the position that we're in, that we don't want to get locked into a three-year deal, our costs are going up and up and up, and that we hope that they would, if we had a reason why the cost needed to go up, that we would not be trying to gouge anybody just to pay a fair share. Um, for the same reason why we're trying to help them out with their, you know, I, I think, you know, what we just talked about last two weeks with the fire chief about, you know, going on some of these calls, I don't, I don't think that they'll get the wrong message, and it, and it should be incumbent upon our police and fire chiefs to have the dialogue with their police and fire chiefs and say, listen, the board still wants to maintain this relationship, they just want some flexibility. That's that. We still have a great working relationship, let's continue in that, in that route. I can't imagine how, again, if there's conversations between our department heads, there shouldn't be any problems.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
Four, one, zero.
In closing, you packet a five F is a request from the school to release an additional one hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars in impact fees for the elementary facility architectural and engineering study.
What was the, uh, what, can you refresh my memory what the issue was with this?
This is above.
We just wanted a, a, a written request, right?
No.
No.
We've already issued the amount they budgeted for, for impact fees, but it came in higher.
Okay.
So they got their two hundred, what was it, two hundred and twelve thousand you released earlier this year?
Right. Orders gave the district approval to use one, two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Okay.
It's the school districts fees.
Right.
We're simply.
The steward of them.
Stewart of them on our ledger.
Exactly. Yep. According to the zoning laws.
And they've met all, everything statutorily that they have to do for us to release these funds?
Yeah, uh, there's nothing in the zoning laws that says you need to budget for this. It's just by a vote of the board of selectmen to release the funds.
Okay, but I.
And the purpose was already affirmed by the first vote to release the two fifteen.
Right, but my, my question is that we're following, we're doing everything that we are statutory obligated to do. And this request coming to them by us approving it is, is.
It's just unusual because you, typically, they've always budgeted for it.
Right, okay.
For the use of impact fees.
Okay. But I think what, what Chairman Davanzo was saying was that our obligation is to make sure that they're using the money for the purposes of, of that, right, purposes described, which they are.
Yep. Right.
It's growth-related.
Yep.
And I, I guess though, clarifying that, so my, my, my question, we're doing everything statutorily that we are obligated to do and required to do. Is there anything that, there, and there is nothing that, um, for us to make sure that they're using the, I mean, we.
They will, when they award this, they will send us all the paperwork to back it up.
Okay.
Because usually, remember, we had this discussion, it's usually typically a reimbursement.
Correct, correct. I just want, so that everybody understands, there's nothing that we are supposed to do to be like looking over their shoulder.
No.
Okay.
No.
And, you know, I just wanted to state that I'm going to, I'll make a motion and I'm going to support the release of these funds, not because I believe in what, as I disagree actually with this, but if I was in the school, but I'm not, but our obligation is to, did they do what they are supposed to do? I'm going to vote yes. Would I do this right now? No. Because I don't see this community for a while approving a bond that's going to be necessary to do something because of the economic conditions, and we're not out of this thing yet, so. That's just my personal opinion, but I, I have to, and I've stated that publicly before, but I, I will vote yes on this because they have met all the conditions that are, that are needed.
Right.
So. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to, uh, release the funds as requested, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. At five G in your packet, you have a letter from Medville requesting forgiveness on delinquent property taxes on an abandoned manufactured home, which is going to be determined to tear down by a potential home buyer's home inspector. Medville is losing about nineteen thousand in land rent, and the delinquent property tax, tax equals five hundred and sixty, five thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. Uh, if the town forgives the taxes, in Medville will demolish the property and move forward.
So I had one question on that. Have we done anything like this before?
That was my question.
Yes.
We have?
Someone passed away. Um, there wasn't enough money to pay the delinquent taxes or pay the land rent. It was just enough to cover the funeral expenses. And, um, yeah, we forgave some taxes.
I mean, if we don't forgive the taxes, they can't demolish the building.
They can't demolish the building, they can't replace the building with another structure to get...
And the taxes that we are being asked to forgive are taxes on the structure, not the land.
That's what makes it unique.
That's, well, I'm, I'm saying...
You have no, you have no equity in the land. See typically, if, if the house were to go and, and you were to demolish the home, you could demolish the home, but then there's still that parcel that has value which the town...
You still have your tax lien.
Right, but in this particular case, you don't have that.
And what I'm getting to is the alternative for us is if we did not forgive these taxes, they could turn around and say, "Okay, we'll come and get your, your building."
Correct.
Basically, okay, and we are going to get, there is no value in that building because that's been assessed or there's a written statement to that effect.
It's a tear down.
And that's why they, they're looking to tear this down.
Can I get a clarification? I, I don't think they can ask us to come and get the building, is that correct?
Right, it's not our building.
Not our building.
Well, no, they could say, "We'll take it for taxes, but you got to get it off our property."
Well, but I'm saying no one wants the building because that's where they're tearing it down.
Right.
So no one can ask us to come get the building. I, I want to make sure we're not implying that by the way we could get stuff...
I was being a little facetious there.
All right, just want to make sure we're clarifying.
Scott? Before we take action on this, um, does anyone around the table see a need to have a discussion with the Medville community, not just about this issue, but about other issues? And I guess here's my concern is that this is not the first one and this will not be the last one in the next, in the short-term future. There was a grant for replacement of septic systems. There's other issues that are going on. We got, we got a, a request a while ago for this emergency shelter and a generator. So there's, there's other issues that are going on. I would like to know that if we did do something like this, what is the strategy from going forward here? Because I don't, we're, at first blush, feel like this might make sense. Will it create a disincentive, possibly, where they know that, that, that the board of selectmen may forgive taxes in future situations as long, and then it becomes part of a standard operating process when these homes fall into disrepair or people go, you know, upside down on them? And is that really government's role to do that per se? I mean, we're in a tough spot here because we cannot collect taxes on this. If this thing was torn down and someone to put, was to put a new home on there, we would generate our taxes again. So there, there, there could be a viable reason for doing this, but by the same token, are there any other properties there that are in peril?
There are.
And, and how many of those? And what's the long-term plan? How is the Medville community managing this problem? I think we're entitled to know that answer. I think we're also entitled to know, do you have any other significant capital costs that are on the horizon? Because this is a, whether it be septic systems, roads, infrastructure issues, what, what's going on that we kind of need to know? Because we, we do have a, you know, we do have a commitment to those folks there, but by the same token, we got to know if we're going to forgive the taxes, is this going to be a long-term thing or a short-term thing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm in favor of this, but like Scott, I'd like to hear some commitment on their part. How quickly is this going to be demolished? I would be disappointed if it was left standing for two years. So I, I would like to hear that from Medville. And, uh, I did visit an officer of their program, uh, this afternoon. There is no buyer waiting in the wings for the potentially vacant land. And there's many other parcels that are for sale there. Even a vacant one that's for sale too. So, uh, you know, I, I would, I would like to have a meeting, how aggressively they're going to handle this.
Nick? Maybe there isn't any urgency in a decision here that maybe we should have that conversation first before we make a, a decision on this, because maybe our decision could be something that's integrated into a long-term plan.
Yeah.
Versus a piecemeal.
That's what I'm thinking.
Especially if there's other vacant lots and there's really, you know, if there was somebody waiting to put a building there, then you could say there's some urgency to getting this done and getting another property on the tax trail, but if there isn't, whether we sit down and talk with them first.
The, the, the note leading into this was, uh, there was a potential buyer and the inspection said, "Don't buy it."
It was the buyer of the property, not the land.
And, and according to their rules, a, a modular only structure would have to be placed on a slab. There's no other options for different types of structures.
Modular or manufactured.
See, manufactured house.
Well, that's different, there's two, there's two different things.
Yeah, they're different.
A modular would appreciate and not depreciate.
But it, it, that...
It was...
Property was approved, the site plan, as a manufactured house park.
Right.
And state RSA specifically identify with a, what a manufactured house is.
Right.
Must have an axle, it must be self-transportable.
Yes.
So you can't put anything else in.
And there's no, see, this is the long-term strategy piece. Because in my opinion, if that changed and as you tore it down, you were able to put a modular home which has, will, which will potentially appreciate in value, not depre, constantly depreciate, then the rules of the game change. Now, you, it's almost that it becomes a better investment for Medville and for everyone because...
But now you're involving site plan.
Yep.
No, no, I, I understand that, but I think maybe that's the reason why we have to have this pow-wow. Maybe it's, maybe it's something where we do get, I don't know, you're, know this better than I do, planning involved and say, "Hey, is there a way to change this so that..." Because the business model itself, I don't think it works. This business model that they have there is not working. In terms of, we as a community do not have any leverage when these people default on their taxes or walk away from a property.
That's what we have and what's in front of us.
So, yeah, and if you, if you, if you went to modular homes, would you have, would you be changing the whole structure? Would it become condominiumized really rather than a car?
But you know what? That might be a better, frankly, a better deal for everybody.
And you don't land under it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, something is, perhaps we should start with the conversation with Scott Bartlett to see some of these questions, things that were coming up as far as the change, what does it do? Condominium, perhaps some of that area that we have, get an idea on that and maybe have some dialogue with them and see if it's something that perhaps, uh, might, might even be beneficial to them.
I still agree with Scott on growth that, and, and I agree with what you're saying, they're also speaking, getting Mr. Bartlett involved, but there's also the part that we've had other correspondence which gave the strong impression that this group was, was tight for cash to do the repairs for things they needed done. Uh, which brings in question the, the longevity of this, of this, of this park. And so I think you, we definitely do need to sit with, with that, with, with that, with this group or the, or shall we say the elected officials of this group and see where it's going in the long term. Because I, this won't be, this is, this is not the first and it won't be the last.
There are too many warning signs that are going off, I think, at this point. And I think it has the potential to be detrimental to the residents who live there, the Medville community itself and potentially the town of Goffstown. So I think our job, I, I, I believe, is not to enable, you know, a, a continuing track that may not be the best business plan, but maybe work with them through Scott or others to see what may be more viable for their sustainability in, in the short, medium, and long term. Not just make short-term decisions, tear it down, we'll forgive the taxes. I think that is not the right approach, I think it's more of a long-term plan.
I mean, that long-term plan may be developing a, a fund, a revolving fund that they have to pay off taxes on properties like that so that they could then clear it and get somebody else there. I understand and I agree with you, there needs to be a long-term. Could I ask one question? Could we get maybe a history of, um, these types of situations going back maybe five or 10 years to see?
We've only had one that we've done, that we've given the taxes on.
The issue though is that...
That, since I've been here.
What, where are we in terms of a potential tipping point? And I say that because this community is how many years old? Thirty?
Well, under a different...
No, I, I say that these, these homes will last, what, forty years?
No.
Less?
I...
Less.
Less than that?
I, I, I spoke to a person at the community today.
Right.
It was twenty-five-year life on a home.
And how, and what is the average age of the homes that are there right now? I don't know this, I'm just, Phil, do you have any idea? When you, when you first started, it was there?
They existed.
Okay, so it's safe to say twenty years for you, so it's minimally twenty. So Medville, a lot of the homes there could easily be at their, almost at their lifespan right now.
Yeah, it could easily be twenty-five or twenty-five, thirty years.
So my point is that I don't know if this is just the beginning of what could be a, a lot of them all starting to go. Then it does become problematic. What happens if a lot of them started to walk away from these things? Then what?
Three hundred and one homes in that building.
I know, and this is, that's why, I mean, I think we do have some responsibility to help them, you know, and talk about what's, what's the long-term plan.
That's good.
So does the town administrator have any clear direction?
I guess you want a meeting with them.
But I think we should, we should have a, have a discussion, perhaps you should have a discussion with Scott, see...
Well, I, I don't know, you, you may be putting the cart before the horse. You need to know what their plan is and...
Well, I guess where I was coming from on that, as far as, um, this remaining the type of housing, because now what, from what Scott's pointing up, the thing that's coming in my mind, if you have, for example, a twenty-five-year lifespan to these homes that are put on their, their, their renting land, they have this manufactured, what meets this definition of manufactured housing to come in here and it's got a twenty-five-year lifespan. Is somebody going to come in and pick this manufactured home and move it someplace else when it's got a twenty-two, so everybody's been around for twenty-two years? And I guess where I'm coming from is, so there is a potential of these really falling, I mean, we could... It's scary to think that we might be looking at two of the, uh, two or three of these perhaps every week at some point in time that, that we might be looking at. And the reason why I talked about with Scott was to find out the different type of housing, how it's taxed, how the assessments are, how it works with this, what's the benefit versus the modular housing on the land versus what you have here now? Because what I'm hearing is if you have a twenty-five-year life on this manufactured housing that obviously is, is not going to go someplace, what's going to happen? What exactly is in front of us? Where if you have a modular home, has a longer lifespan on it, is it, the way it's taxed, is that better for the community for the, of Medville? And if it is, we find out from Scott, have a meeting with them and perhaps have that discussion.
The construction of it, as you know, is just completely different. I mean, a modular home is just simply built off-site in controlled conditions, almost better than stick-built.
Two, two local building codes.
Right, two local building codes.
For a manufactured house, it's not.
Right.
It's a home, I mean, it, it's...
It would be a win-win for everyone, but we still have to get through that planning piece because it, you know, it's...
If, if, we shared, have this discussion with them, see where they're going and if they feel that that's a good way to go, then we need to go forward to see what we can...
And then do it through attrition.
Right.
Exactly.
As it happens, yeah, then it becomes a more of a viable plan because you know that, and then they can say, every time one of these things reaches a point where it's in a state of disrepair, it can only be replaced with, you know, a modular type unit.
There was one of my questions today, have they demolished any houses and hadn't rebuilt?
Right.
And the answer was no, but they made reference to other, there's perhaps a dozen such communities in the state.
Yeah.
Scott would be able to find that out.
Right.
Our, what is allowing, he, the person I spoke to made reference to other communities in the state are doing that. Well, my question would be, what rules allow them to do that?
What we talked about modular, I mean, uh, modular homes?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what is being done in other communities like this, there's only a dozen of them or so, that allows them to tear down and rebuild?
Nick? First a clarification, rebuild with the same or with a modular?
Scott could find that out, I, I don't, I'm not going to answer that because I...
Because there's, there's more than, under manufactured housing, your site, your lot is much, much smaller, so you couldn't replace one with another. You might have to wait till two or three are gone before you could put one in and you would have to consolidate, just because your, your lot sizes are, are different. But maybe if we could get a listing of, when was the last time one of those properties sold? When was the last time a new building was brought in? How many are currently vacant? How many are original owners? And that would kind of give us a, a snapshot of what the community looks like.
Just, just to clarify, I mean, we're talking private community here also. I mean, that's, there, I mean, there's a piece here when we talk about taxpayer dollars here that, you know, there's a difference, I think, between the community at large and a private community, community. I, I just want to just clarify that, I'm not sure where, where, you know, where we go as a community. In other words, when people purchase these properties, they have to pay certain fees per month. And part of that is that they, as a group, would vote on these, on these amounts and that, and that's the amount that they would need as they would look, look out in the future for what they need to have done, be it septic or, or clubhouses or roads or anything like that. And if they, now, if, if the amounts were not set enough, there was a benefit to those people in those, in that community during those periods of time. And now we're asking kind of the rest of the community, I'm just, you know, you, you, we have to be careful with that and that's all.
Just the one, just, just answer to that is, for that particular community, for many years, they were strictly renters. And then it wasn't until, how many years ago did they actually did Medville, six years?
Yeah, about that.
They, it actually became owner occupied. So they didn't have the benefit of, in the very beginning, setting out plans because they didn't own it back then.
No, the owner only paid for the land taxes and each individual unit owner paid via their property taxes.
So I'll get back...
It's just the same as it is now.
I'll get back to my other question, does the town administrator have clear direction?
I, I think it should not be at a regular meeting if you want to have a workshop with Medville and kind of meet with them more informally and ask them about their long-term plan.
But...
And I can add, and, and as resources here, we can have maybe the planner and the assessor here to answer questions as they arise.
But do we want, do you want to have that conversation with both the assessor and the planner?
Yeah, I've already had the conversation with the assessor and, but enough the plan in return.
But as far as, as far as going into, uh, changing the type of housing that's there?
Yeah, he agrees that modular would be a benefit to all.
Right, but it might, maybe the thing to do also is to pull the site plan on, see what was approved, how, how it was worded? And see if there's anything in the way that it's worded that it could be without a change.
But then you have to worry about their, their, have financial obligations and their mortgage and, I mean...
If, if they tear it down, they get rid of the pad the old structure was sitting on. In many cases, that destroys your grandfather's rights to rebuild on the same footprint.
Speak of who's here.
Speak of the devil.
He must have been watching. Come on, Doug Scott.
Are your ears burning? Yeah, kind of red.
Come on, Doug Scott.
Scott, we were discussing, the one I talked to you about, the Medville one. They, they want to demolish it and they want forgiveness of the outstanding property taxes. And we were discussing, meeting with them and coming up with a long-term plan for this because as these age, we're going to get more and more of these requests. And we were discussing replacement through attrition with modular homes and of course we have to go with planning for that, but...
The only, the only issue I would have with a long-term plan is that you can't, um, forgive future taxes. The only thing you can forgive is taxes on a one-by, one-on-one basis. You know, because they, I, Mr. Pierce had sent, given me, showed me a letter where they were asking for us to have a policy where we would forgive taxes on these. You can't have an open-ended policy like that.
You didn't share that one with us?
You didn't share that one, yeah?
Yeah.
I don't hear everything.
Okay, now we know where this is going now, okay.
But, um, on a one-by, one-on-one basis, then I don't believe there's any issue with that. You know, because then you're looking at that specific issue and, um, you're not making a, a policy. And when you make a policy, I think that's when you might run into some issues.
See, I, I, I think my concern is that if the market, the free market takes its... See, I, I, I think my concern is that if the market, the free market takes its, uh, takes its own path here, I'm not sure about the viability of this business plan there, because, um, we've been asked on numerous occasions to forgive taxes. We've been asked to apply for community development block grants on the community's behalf, where arguably federal tax dollars went to a private, uh, community to replace their septic systems. Um, we were asked for, for other forgiveness on a generator, because they have other financial problems, and so I'm just, I'm growing increasingly concerned that there's some financial issues that are present, and are we enabling that? You know, um, are we, so either we're going to assist in terms of getting them on the right track, in terms of giving them good, sound advice, um, or is the market gonna take its course, and, and, and I'm fearful that this could be the tipping, this could just be the tip of the iceberg here, cause as these things start to age out, it could be a snowball effect, like it's, you know, bigger and bigger, and all, before you know it, this, this twenty-one year, you know, and right now it's a handful, but as these things get to be aged out to twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years, it's not gonna get any better.
Right, um. All right, I mean, I think we could probably sit here all night and have this discussion, and I don't. And Scott came here, knowing that he was gonna have this discussion, he's here for another issue.
He wasn't prepared for this one, but.
No, I know, um, but perhaps, um, work with, uh, Scott and the planner, and then perhaps see about, uh, some dates to have a meeting. Is that agreeable with the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
What would be a good date for the board? Do you wanna do it, uh, in the morning or?
Whenever.
How much time are we talking about?
That'd probably be an hour, I would think, discussion.
Seems short.
Yeah, that seems short, too.
Well, when we find out what's good for them. What's the matter?
No, I would think, most of them are retired.
Yeah, those, yeah.
I mean, I'm not, not, not all of them are, but I, I think most are, but. And they could even be there for that matter, I mean, we'll have to.
Yeah, as long as we both still.
Yeah.
Okay.
Meet with them down there?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay. All right.
Shall I go back to the peanut gallery where it's safe?
Thank you. Should we just skip and go right back?
Yeah, well, wait a minute. I was just gonna suggest, if you wanted to, was there anything else from the town administrator's report?
Not for public.
Well, that's where I was going.
Going to non-public?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you know, two people waiting for non-public.
Yeah.
And then we'll come back and finish.
Yeah.
I do have, excuse me, I do have one public issue.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Evaluation.
Evaluations, yeah.
Eight o'clock. Just taking it now, I think.
Taking now and going to non-public?
Well, either that or we could do it when we come out of non-public.
Motion to go into non-public session under R S A ninety-one A three, two, C, second.
Compensation.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, we are in non-public session. Uh, we're back from non-public session. And the, uh, next order is, we finished with the town administrator's report, so we'll go to selectmen's discussion, new business.
No, assessor Bartlett?
Evaluations, remember?
Number eight, number seven of them.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, we were jumping over. Uh, we have a scheduled appointment with assessor Scott Bartlett regarding valuations.
Good evening.
Good evening, Scott.
I'll pass these around, I'm sorry I did not get these to you previously. Um, we decided on Friday that I would come in this evening. Over the last five years, the assessor's office has visited every single improved property in town. This was completed, uh, last fall, um, early winter, and all the information got entered into the, um, into the computer, into the vision, the software, um, over the, over the winter. So now, everything has been visited over about a five-year cycle. It was always our plan, once that was completed, to do another update of value, so that we will have changed or updated all the physical data, now we're gonna update the values. Uh, right now, uh, we are three years into our five-year cycle, the last one we did was in two thousand and eight. Um, what has been happening is the market has been changing since then. In two thousand and ten, our ratio was a hundred and three point four, meaning that the average assessment is three point four percent higher than actual market value. The market has continued to drop, and right now, we're somewhere between a hundred and five and a hundred and ten percent of market value. Um, so it is my recommendation that we go forward, we do an update of value to bring things down to values as of April of two thousand and eleven. In preparation for that, I, I've prepared this letter that I would like to get your permission to put into the first tax bill, which is gonna be going out in, um, June first, late May, June first. Essentially, this is very similar to what I did in two thousand and eight. It's notifying taxpayers that I will be updating value. Those values will take effect on the second tax bill. The first tax bill will be the old values or the, the current values that we have on, which are based on the two thousand and eight update of value. Essentially, I wanna have my proposed values finished by August first, and then I post those on the web. Now that we have Vision Appraisal online, I put it there as well. So I'd have it, uh, the property record card information on Vision Appraisal. I'd have a list on the web, and I'd also have a list at the countertop, so that people could come in and look at it. Um, this gives people enough time to come in and talk to me if they need to, and then, uh, hopefully, we'd get the MS one done for September first, same as normal process.
Question?
Nick?
So you said we're, we're three years into the five-year cycle?
Yes, we are.
So if you complete this by August, do we then start the clock again at that point for five years?
That's. That is not my intent, my intent is to, the, the Department of Revenue reviews our values and our assessment practices every five years. I don't wanna change that timetable, so they will be coming in two thousand and thirteen. So I would have to do an update of value again in two thousand and thirteen. I'm trying to establish a policy of cyclical remeasure and list, which is the physical inspections of properties with periodic updates. Um, at least every five years, but I believe it should be done more often, um, to keep us in line, so that we don't have the jumps in value you see when you wait more than five years. Usually, when, when you wait five years, you are gonna see jumps in values, cause there are shifts. If you do it more frequently, and I, I'm not recommending that we do it every year, as some towns have, have chosen to do. I do think doing it twice in a five-year cycle is, is about, is about right. Um, so do it every five years, and then sometime in the, in the interim years, ever, the second or the third year. Also, keep abreast of what's going on out there. If I was at a hundred percent of value right now with a very tight coefficient dispersion, which is kinda like the, um, the equity measure, uh, I wouldn't be recommending this, um, but we're not, we're not at a hundred percent. We're at a hundred, as I said, between a hundred and five and a hundred and ten percent. If we were at ninety to ninety-five, I probably wouldn't be recommending this. But when you get assessments that are greater than the actual market value, they cause more concern on the taxpayer part than, than is normal.
Cause I'm paying, they think that they're paying more, and there's more calls generated, and.
Yes. So it, it's, it's a service to them to try to keep those, uh, at, near, and if anything, under a hundred percent.
Hypothetically, if, if market values in general have dropped, and you revalue in most homes, you get to the hundred percent, and most homes, and then again, in general, cause you're gonna have fluctuations here and there, newer homes may increase, but in general, if most homes are assessed now closer to the actual market value, would individuals see a, probably nothing out of, more out of their pocket, but would they see a higher tax rate?
Yes. I don't expect that there'll be much changes in taxes as a result of this. Right now, our equity is pretty good. Um, in two thousand and ten, we were at a hundred and three point four percent with a coefficient dispersion of, um, seven percent. That's excellent equity. So that means most properties were within a fairly tight range of, of, the selling prices were within a fairly tight range. I don't expect that to change. Uh, I'm not looking to increase our equity, because as I said, it's, it's excellent right now. So the net result is that taxes are not gonna change very much. If I lower on average values by ten percent, tax rate's gonna go up by ten percent.
It's always the misnomer, though, is people, they say that the tax rate went up ten per, it's really, the bottom line is what are you paying in taxes?
Right. The out-of-pocket, yep.
Right, but, but it gets, for some reason, I just, every single time this thing happens, it's, did you hear that our taxes went up? And no, they didn't, the rate went up because the value, you know, the values went down, you still have to, it's about how much you have to fund, you know, and collect. That changes, you know, it doesn't change, but the, the pie changes, you know?
I don't need a, uh, answer tonight. Um, I mean, I, I would like to get this in the first tax bill, which probably is gonna be sent, you know, late May. That's when I would, would like an answer, well, I'd like an answer before that, obviously, but, uh.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, proceed with the assessor's recommendation. I'll, do you wanna give my reason now, or I'll wait for the second?
You can give your reason now.
It, it just gives Scott the time, you know, now, he, so he can start working on it, and it's not like, I think we're gonna be changing our opinion on it, so I'd rather just soon get it done.
And Nick, you seconded that?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll get back to the regular schedule, and we have selectmen's discussion, new business, do we have any new business? Seeing none, we'll move on, old business.
Yeah, I, I had, uh, I just wanted to comment about the last couple of weeks. We talked about our Conservation Commission appointments, and, um, you know, I kinda left myself personally, I don't know how everybody else felt, but it was, it was kind of awkward, the first week was awkward, last week was probably even more awkward. My, I'm only speaking for myself. I don't think anything poorly of the individuals, I personally would like to see a different composition of the Conservation Commission, and that's why, um, it was my intent not to support the, you know, the recommendations. Um, I did not know what other, what other folks were gonna do. But I, I, I would like to see a little bit more balance, and, um, I think I've expressed that same concern, I, I have, in the past, I had an issue with the Parks and Rec in that process, uh, I believe I did it with Conservation two or three years before that. And again, I don't think it speaks to anyone personally, cause I think that they're, these are both very nice people, they're very intelligent, they, they, they do bring a lot uh, to the table with their experience, but in terms, I'd like to see some different perspectives on the Conservation Commission, and having sat on the Budget Committee, um, we keep on talking about, um, you know, trying to increase our, uh, you know, cut, cut, cut. And I think that, the other thing, too, is we have to try to think about, how do we increase our tax base? Um, and I think there needs to be more of a partnership, um, you know, with Conservation and Planning and our community to try to promote, uh, promote business, and I'd like to see some different perspectives, uh, with regard to that. So that's, um, that's just my, you know, my take, I just wanna see a different, a different composition, and that's why I, I guess that was how I, my, I guess my lack of, uh, of a second, that was my reason for it. And I felt a little awkward, um, I wasn't really fully prepared to talk about it in public, I thought we would, from when I read, I thought we would be talking about it in non-public, um, but it is what it is, so. That's my, my, my opinion on it. Anything else?
Question, is there a direction that the board is gonna take?
Well, I think the direction that we did was we gave the town, authorized the town administrator to post the, posted positions.
The two members serve until they're replaced.
Correct, but it's by statute. Right. Right.
So Kathy is putting together the whole vacancy list openings, um, for all committees, and it'll be here on there.
The, if, if I may?
Yeah.
On our agenda, uh, today, we talked about the appointment of a, of a Cable Access Committee member, and I had stated that I, I wasn't prepared to talk, to confirm or not confirm that appointment. In our packet, in, in, in the packet there, it, it did have the application.
Oh, it was in the signature folder?
It was in the signature folder, um, which I did not read prior to, um, it was, you, sometimes, a lot of times it's in our materials. The individual, um, is the Director of the Manchester Cable Access. I would just assume, make that recommendation, or, you know, to appoint, motion to appoint.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I haven't seen the application, I mean, I, I'm glad, I mean, Scott, I mean, Chairman, I mean, Scott, I mean, it's obviously fun, but I still have not seen the application, so I'm not, I'm not gonna act on it.
I'm familiar with the individual.
Would you like to see?
Affiliation?
Okay. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just hang on a minute there, take a quick look at that. Do you have a motion to the second? You're all set? Okay, no further discussion, are all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Abstain.
It's four, zero, one. Okay, is there anything else in old business? Done? Okay, uh, committee reports, Sewer Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sewer Commission met on the thirteenth, April. Of significance there, uh, the commission contracted with a firm called Wright Pierce, and, uh, that firm is preparing for the commission their first annual report. The subject of the report is capacity, maintenance, operation, and maintenance program, management program. And it's a report that is, uh, required at the state level. Second item, uh, the commission did hold a public meeting on the thirteenth of April, Parnardville Fire Station, for the residents and businesses, uh, along Mast Road to hear about the construction plan, um, starting this week. The, the firm is mobilized, I, I made a report on this, I believe, in the last session, but the firm is mobilizing this week on Wednesday. More than likely, they'll actually then begin active construction, uh, next Monday. And as previously reported, there'll be a, a first phase of day construction, alternating one lane on Mast Road. Once all that main line is in, and some short connections, connections to houses are in, they'll turn to nighttime operation to put the connections on to houses, which will, uh, those connections require a complete closure of Mast Road. And, uh, that is best facilitated at nighttime construction. And that phase would last, uh, uh, four to six weeks. Eight roads and, I believe, fourteen or fifteen structures have to be connected during that period. And the third phase was, uh, re-asphalting of the entire road. And during that time, there'd be. And during that time, there'd be daylight construction and daytime construction and alternating traffic. The SOR Commission also was sending letters to all of the upbutters on the affected streets, including people who live on a street where the entire line from a street feeds into the main line. That completes, oh, well, I'll put out one last item. Here at the town hall, we track what properties have been failing to pay the SOR bill. And there were thirteen properties still remaining on the two thousand eight tax year. Those are significant because they'll, if not resolved, there's potential for tax lien. Similarly, thirty-four properties have not fully paid two thousand nine tax accounts. And in two thousand and ten, there are one hundred and thirty-five properties that have not fully paid their SOR bill. Let's see. And local contractors, they're technically called drain layers. Their licenses were renewed so that they could do construction on residents involving SOR lines. And that's, completes my report.
Question.
Sure.
On the reader boards, what is the date that's reading right now for the construction for the SOR, for the SOR going through the village, I mean, not the village, the, the.
I haven't noticed.
I, I.
It may have read previous date.
Previous date, and I was just wondering, because from what I'm gathering from a couple of people I spoke to who have business down there, they feel traffic, people already avoiding the area. And so if there's going to be another week before they go, maybe we can change that date.
And, and thank you for bringing that up. The, the flashing light reader boards are brought, compared to last year, those boards are brought in much closer to the construction zone for the purposes of not diverting traffic too quickly
Yeah.
into a detour situation, so that they're closer to the businesses before they make decisions to, to go with the one lane alternating traffic or to avoid completely the area through a detour. But, good point.
Is that good?
I will bring it up with DPW tomorrow and have them appropriate
Thank you.
texts on the words, on the signs.
And I have one question for you. Has there been any discussion on this nighttime work of, in case they run into a situation where they run into an emergency?
Yes, that was brought up both in the SOR Commission re, this, meeting as well as the public information meeting. The roads will be accessible for an emergency. Even if they're connecting an entire street where there's a dozen houses on the street, the road will be accessible in an emergency situation.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions, David? Seeing none, budget committee?
Met with the budget committee last week, some highlights here, Guy Karen will be the vice chairman. Dan appointed him. We also discussed how we're going to proceed with budget presentations, and the end result was that we're going to continue with what we did last year, where it would be a one-day event. The majority of budget committee members preferred that. So the date that we set, or that we are looking to set, is October twenty-second. And that's when the town would, would, would do our budget presentations at nine AM, and we're looking at having it, rather than here, at the high school. We felt that this room was too small, and so we're looking at having it at the high school. May, perhaps, they have a step room? And, or, or the, which we better acoustically, and if not, then we have to have it in the media center, maybe try to get with the school on a speaker system, because.
You won't have your health insurance rates at that point. I was hoping, because usually when the budget committee gets a selectman budget, you have the new health insurance rates. And you won't have it that early, you don't get it till the end of October.
October twenty-second, won't get till.
You, you usually don't get it till the last.
Okay, well, that, that, I don't know if that, there's, there will then be another presentation from the school, will be on November fifth. And then we talked about having town-side discussions for callbacks on, we're going to then switch back to Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that'll be, the town would be October twenty-fifth and the October twenty-seventh, November first and November third.
Before, we did it this way last year.
Right.
They used to get their budget in November, the first week in November, from the selectman. Is there a way of pushing this to then, so we can give them real numbers and we don't have to speculate about what the health insurance increase is going to be?
I don't think it matters. I, I don't, because the, the other discussion that we had was, we had a pretty frank discussion that we went through all this thing with the callbacks, and then, you know, questioning every, you know, a lot of different items. And at the end of the day, there were people who had a percentage, or they wanted level funded, or they wanted, and I, and I think it's important that we, as a, as a budget committee, we have to have those discussions, is that, what is the, what is the target range here? Last year, there's a lot of discussions about a ten percent, what would a ten percent decrease look like? And then at the end of the day, it was a level-funded tax rate. And I think that our, the budget committee is going to have those discussions as to, what does it look like? Is it level-funded tax rate again? Is it, is it a one percent, two percent, three percent increase in the tax rate? And those are the discussions, but when we, because at the end of the day, they're going to come up with a, a percentage, that's what it seems like, it's, it's been going. So all those justifications, they may be great for us, but then we're going to have to figure out, well, if this is what the budget committee is willing to fund, then we have to figure out how to fund, you know, to fund that dollar amount. I don't know, I, I thought, I'll put it this way, this is my opinion. Spent a hundred hours or more on the budget, and at the, at the end, it was, we're going to have a level-funded, if I would have known that from day one, I think our lives could have been a lot easier. So it's a new budget committee, we'll probably have some additional discussions, but, you know, I, my take is that this is not uncommon for the budget committee to not have, you know, health insurance rates. The school seems to always be late on that as well, and as we know it.
The school's in a different side, though.
Right, exactly, right.
They're July, so.
So that could be an open-ended thing, and didn't last year, I, I believe in our presentation, we, we figured out what was the five-year average during our presentation, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think you had your real numbers. This will be the first time we, the selectmen submit a budget without real numbers.
I don't agree. I, I have to double-check, but I could have sworn that we said, Sue, what was the, yeah, yeah, last year, we went in and it actually was lower. We did a presentation based upon the five-year average, and it ended up being lower than that five-year average.
That's because you changed the plan.
No, it's because the rates were also lower.
No, the plan changed. We went to the higher pace, but.
I'll trust you.
But one way or other, it changed.
Right, but my point is that they're, they don't finalize their numbers until, like, December. And, and we'll know what the insurance rates are anyway, I just don't see it being a.
Usually right before Christmas.
Right. And I, and I think most budget committee members understand that that's one of the big things that you just don't know.
I, I guess I don't understand the rush. I don't understand why they can't wait two weeks to get real numbers.
Because they want to get a jumpstart on going through deliberations and having, you know, feedback from department heads, because they want to be done by the middle of December. And when you push it back, that means it pushes it back towards, towards Christmas time. And I think that's, whether we like it or not, I, I tend to agree with them. That, that to me doesn't, I don't think it changes things that much.
So what do you want to do, estimate a twenty percent increase in health insurance?
No, I think, I think you take the last five years.
We had a change in plan, so the, last year, it was skewed, two thousand and ten was skewed by change in plan.
Take a fifteen percent increase, you know, twenty percent.
Well, let me ask you this. The plan that we currently have, how long have they offered that plan?
How long did who offer it?
Been offered, LGC has been offering that plan, you can ask them historically, what has those increases been?
Right.
So just contact them to find out what the increase is.
Just to say, over the last five years, this is what the historical increases have been, and.
And they can't do that, because it's based on your experience, so we didn't have a plan for five years, so.
I understand, but they know what the plan has been, and we just, and we tell the budget committee, LGC, this plan, across the board, all different municipalities, it has sustained a twelve percent increase, or fifteen, whatever it is, and this is subject to change. And we, I mean, I've done this speak with the budget committee for a long time.
If, if we're not going to have the rates until, let's say, the second week in December?
No, we have the rates, the health insurance rates, you'll have those the last week in October.
Okay. So does it make a difference if the departments make their presentations prior to that? And just wait until they get the health insurance information? That'd be the only piece that's missing, but they can go through.
What's the process? Last year, the department heads just made the presentation
To the board?
To the board of selectmen, the board of selectmen presented their budget to the budget committee.
This one would be simultaneous. That's, didn't that's what we did last year?
The, the, the department heads came in to just the selectmen, because Lieutenant Cabasal pointed out, we need to have some input before we develop our budget.
Right.
But the, so the bottom line is that, that there would be a Q and A, or a presentation at least to the budget committee of that, of their department head budgets, and it would just be simply, the unknown would be the health, you know, would be the benefits.
Are you expecting them to look towards a percentage number of, of growth or reduction before that period?
Yeah, I, 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 I think we're going to start having some of those discussions as to, to give what they believe should be a targeted range.
Would it be wise, and if they had, just, just for, just in the same, to request a number prior to
Yes.
Prior, given the department has enough time to prepare what their budget would be and what it would look with.
Yes.
Okay, so you think that's going to be in time for that also?
Yes. That's my opinion, I, we have not taken.
No, no, I understand, I'm saying, but that's, that's.
So who's present, I guess, I, I just want to get this straight, who's presenting on October twenty-second? And what's being presented? The selectmen's budget, the department head budget?
I, I believe what we did last year was a combination of both. The selectmen worked with their liaison and did a presentation.
But it was a selectmen's budget that was
Yes, selectmen's budget.
Presented.
Yeah.
Right, but we had a presentation prior
Right.
from the department heads.
Right.
And we got that information, we went through that, but when we presented it, as Scott said.
You, it was a joint presentation of the selectmen's budget.
Right.
Right.
So, and then, what they did request was that they receive that budget a week, a week prior to the, to the presentation, so they could look it over.
Did we actually have them ready, though, when we did it? So I don't know if we did have it ready or not, so we'd have to make sure we have it ready.
The reason why, Sue, we didn't go with the twenty, we went with the twenty-second, we didn't go with the twenty-ninth, because I think it, you know, Halloween and all, I mean, I think that's pretty much why. But I can talk, I can certainly go back to them and.
Twenty-ninth, I could probably have the numbers done by the twenty-ninth.
I can ask, you know, it doesn't hurt, you know?
His last comment was having that document out a week before this presentation.
Right.
So even if you're
You're right.
Now you're the first week in November, yeah.
Now you're well into November.
Right.
And it's too late.
And that's when they used to get it, they used to get the selectmen's budget, and they, the first discussion would be their first regular meeting in November, that's how it used to be.
Correct, but
And I understand, it gets into the holidays.
Right, but then the difference between that process is before, we would still start this process the first week of October, if I'm not mistaken.
For the department heads, yeah.
Well, the department heads would come in.
September.
Right, September, so you'd have like five, six weeks of like
Right.
department heads coming in, and then they would be asking, you know, there would be questions, and people listen, and then at the end of the day, it wasn't even, all those things that they listened to, we did what we had to do before it even got back to them, so I think what this does is that it eliminates all the department heads coming in and having the budget committee do the Q and A, and it, and simply just, it shortens that time period.
Yeah, no, I, I like the one day. I thought, that was great.
The only thing with the one, and I like the one day also, there wasn't a large turnout for the one day, which then still created questions on the, on the back end, I mean.
It's always going to be that way.
I understand.
And we had, we had like three or four people who didn't show, out of the sixteen on the budget committee, it's going to happen, and, yeah, it was three or four. And how many people can't make every single Monday night
Right.
continuously, and they missed, you know, two presentations, so it's.
And then it's, it's even tougher to follow who was there and who wasn't for a different presentation.
So. The other thing that came out that was kind of interesting was that Representative Burt told us that there was a, a bill that would eliminate the mandatory requirement for cemeteries to be fenced in. And that had to do with, and I don't know where that stands, and, but there is legislation out there, and I think, according to him, it passed the House, or a committee in the House, so if we can keep an eye on that one, or, or, or get with him on, on it.
Was it a House bill?
I believe it was, yeah, it's a House bill. But just, if you can just give John a call, because that would impact, was, remember, the prior week, we talked to the trustees? And that was it. There was a lot of discussion about dates, and when we're going to meet, and what the expectations are, but, I don't know, we're good.
Right. Okay, any question?
More discussion on the school side, if anything.
Any questions of Scott? Planning Board did meet for a workshop last week. There were a few things that were on the agenda, actually, we were able to get out of there by nine o'clock. The board discussed, they discussed designating a rep from the planning board to serve on the Source Water Protection Plan Advisory Committee. That's with Southern New Hampshire Planning. The, they didn't make a nomination to that until they wanted to find out exactly what meetings it would be, and they wanted to make sure that the, all the members were aware of it, because there were two members that, one of them had expressed some interest, but it wasn't clear whether or not they would be able to. They also talked to making process changes to the development regs. And it was basically a brainstorming session on how to improve the amount of time that it takes for projects to get through the planning process. And one of the things I brought up to them was, a lot of that depends on how much they were willing to give to David and, you know, staff to make, to work on those things and get processes approved to, so when, when they get to the board, that there's less time spent at the, at the board level to make that. Some of the things were, that I, I suggested was, like, when you take a look at a, at a sign that comes in, instead of looking at all the size and the height of the lettering and stuff like that, let, let staff take a look at that and deal with those issues, and we just do the final approval. And that's one thing that they, they, they seem to be willing to look at. They also talked about some changes that might be needed to, to make, made to the zoning ordinance and the developed regs based on recent changes made through the, the regs, but it was noted that there were several bills that they really couldn't discuss that were, they couldn't discuss because they weren't sure of the numbers and everything, of some that are in the process of going through that are going to affect that, so that's something that could be coming up. They also discussed some issue about impact fee studies for both transportation and school impact fees and CIP projects that could be suggested. This, it was, it's just a general discussion, because the issue came up, well, if the planning board was recommending a project that went through CIP, it's, might be an issue because that's, CIP is a part of the planning board, and the planning board then would be voting on a project that they might, so, that didn't, did you have a question?
No, I had, I forgot to add something. CIP, you just jogged my memory.
Okay.
Last year, there was no budget committee rep to the CIP.
Right.
This year, Ivan Beliveau volunteered, and he will serve as the budget committee rep to CIP.
Okay, great.
And I forgot to mention that.
Thank you. There was also a, a brief discussion regarding conservation commission. And it was pointed out that the, you just mentioned, there was some, a little bit of discussion on it. And that the planning board does, does rely on members for some of the input regarding plans that come before the planning board. And that they do rely on that, and that it was a discussion as to whether or not, you know, make any recommendation to the board, but it was left, they basically just asked me to.
But it was left, they basically just asked me to just convey the message, you know, of, of what their discussion was. They realized that it's within, totally within the purview of the Board for those appointments. And they wanted to just make sure that I conveyed that, that, that we were aware, that they were aware that that was ours. They had a concern that the appointments, or the lack of those appointments, might cause a problem where the Commission couldn't function. But then I explained to them that they would serve by statute, that they serve on there unless they, you know, they stepped down, resigned, or until they're, until they're replaced. And they were, I guess that, that satisfied that. They also briefly discussed an ongoing desire to work with Hillsborough County to prepare land for some future development on that, as to whether, you know, and there was a general discussion as to whether or not the county has to follow zoning, you know, those types of issues that usually comes up. And one thing that did come up was possible making an improvement to the website that might have a projects webpage basically on there, that might show projects that were in the works or coming up, that have gone through the planning process, or that are in there, just so that other people coming on, they could see some of the things that are going on, or coming up and off, so, yeah.
That might be very helpful to partner with EDC, because they're, they're doing something similar of trying to at least show on the website, which they have, here are some parcels that have approvals. I think that would be a really good, and I think Abington Square is probably one of the more notable ones. But I think that would be a great idea.
Yep, okay. But I think overall, it was, it was, you know, a few good, I think, good things came up out of that. That was it. Any other questions? Any other reports?
Just a clarification. It was House Bill three eighty-two.
Thank you.
Where, do you know what, what status it is, Nick?
Passed the House, now.
Oh, passed the House?
That's going to cross over.
Yeah.
So that on the fencing for the cemeteries.
Bill removes the requirement that municipalities maintain sufficient fencing and gates surrounding municipal public cemeteries.
That's, that's a discussion in and of itself, but, anyway. Do we have any other public business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.